This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
Everybody to our first City Council meeting of 2020. I'll call this meeting to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this evening.
And also take role for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Wilson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. And Sandy, you have some comments there?
Um, I'm not certain, Kathy, were the bills uploaded to the website?
No, it was sent in last week's.
Okay, I didn't know if, I hadn't heard anything, so I have nothing.
Next meeting, okay. We'll have them at the next meeting.
That's it.
All right, so what you see on your agenda in your packet is the consent agenda. Are there any items that council staff would like to see handled in a separate matter, which would mean that we would put it on the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, second.
A motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, there are no additions or deletions to that, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fair, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under number seven, non-agenda items and announcements, public input. So if anybody in the audience, or council, or staff, that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. Lori, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, you know, a great big heads up to the library who has made some significant changes in fines and monies due, and eliminating that to make it easier for especially juveniles and children to be fine-free. And so, it's all over, and it's a great thing to do, and it's all about the involvement in TIC, you know, and what we need to be doing. Trauma-informed care. So thank you.
Any other comments, public input? All right, let's move on then to new business. We have a special use permit for Lori Jacus and Brianna Marcia for Kahootz Adult Day Service, WTKD Properties LLC. And Erin, this is you.
Yes, sir. So yeah, we have a special use permit application. This has gone through Plan Commission. This is for 506 Wisconsin Street. This was the former Wapaka-Taiquandou facility, and they're looking to use it as a group daycare center. This is in the R3 Multiple Family Resident District. And the group daycare is the proposed use, and that is an allowable use under the special use permit. Just a little information, they're looking to have about 10 employees, or up to 10 employees, serve up to 25 members at a time. And really, no questions, no concerns from a staff standpoint, and we would be recommending approval of this special use permit.
I would move to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve the special use permit for WTKD Properties LLC, better known as Kahootz Adult Daycare Services. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Wilson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, staying with you, Erin, we have the development agreement for the Catholic Church. Bring us up to date on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Smith. We have a memo on page 138 of your packets. This just takes us through the background and the summary. You guys are all aware of the background of that property, Old St. Mary's Church, 223 Division Street. We are in need of amending the acquisition and development agreement that was made between the city and Mr. Pedrelli. With the work that Marcy Reynolds and the arts community is doing over the next few months, in trying to come up with a feasibility study, seeing if they can garner the support in the community to turn that into a community arts center, we are looking to amend this timeline. And I believe, let's see, it should be starting on page 140. That is the agreement, and it shows highlighted in red what those changes are. Just to outline those, the development plan would need to come forward on June 16th. The time to review it between the city and the developer would be September 2nd, 2020. And then the final development plan approved by the city, we're looking at October 1st. So that's how things have shifted. We have talked to Ms. Reynolds about this, and Mr. Pedrelli. Both are okay with it, and actually, Ms. Reynolds thought that probably within three months, they should have a pretty good direction on, you know, what their effort looks like. So we'll just stay in touch, and if we can move it along faster than that kind of six-month extension, we will do that.
Yeah, so actually, this extension is coming from the city, and Mr. Pedrelli has been very gracious in allowing us to extend this date, so. Anybody have any questions? We would need a motion to approve this amendment.
So move.
Motion by Martin, second by Hackett, that we approve the amended development agreement between Mr. Nino Pedrelli for 223 South Division Street, which is the old St. Mary's Catholic Church. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Wilson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, again, Erin, we have building permit fee schedule.
Yes, this memo is on page 142 of your packets, and this is being brought forward, actually, just with a slight amendment from what has been used over this past year. Actually, in the 2000, well, it would have been in 2018 for the 2019 budget. In that budget process, a new fee schedule was kind of adopted as a part of the overall budget. We want to bring it forward for formal adoption now and act on it as a separate item. I will say that the fee schedule you see attached here, starting on page 144, has been in play for the last 12 months. The one thing that we ran into over this year was a kind of a problem when it got to the higher-value projects, notably Gusmer and Foundry. Those were multimillion-dollar projects. And as the value went up, since ours is tied to value, so did those fees as kind of like an escalator. And we compared that to Appleton, and they have kind of a spot, and it's at that million-dollar mark, where all of a sudden it jumps from $15 per $1,000 in value to $750. And it'll stay at that $7.50, anywhere above that $1 million in value. I can tell you, when you compare building fee schedules across communities, it is like apples and oranges. Everyone does it a little different. Some people do it on square foot. But I can tell you, if you look at the national average, you compare that cost per square foot to kind of what it would have been in the Foundry or Gusmer, where we're right in that ballpark. So you can see where it's highlighted on the bottom of page 145. Basically, just fees will move from $15 to $7.50 per $1,000 of cost, once a project exceeds $1 million of project cost. And that's a change we're looking to implement, and that would be in place for 2020.
So the first million would be the higher fee, and then additional dollars would be the lower fee?
That is correct. And I, good question, I was writing that, and it was hard to make that clear, but yes.
Okay, so this fee structure has actually been in place for just a couple of years, and so we are finding some places that need to be corrected, and this was one of them. One of the things you have to be very careful of when you have fee structures like that, it has to be reasonable. So, I mean, when we were looking at, like, the Foundry project, you know, if we would have used the fee structure that we had originally put in there, we actually would have been charging them more than what we actually have been paying our building inspector for the whole year. So the amount didn't really seem reasonable at that point, although she does have a lot of work to make that project go through. But, so this will put it more into the reasonable rate that it needs to be, so. Okay, we need a motion then to approve this new building permit fee schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve the building permit fee schedule. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eric Wilson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Erin. You can relax now, it's Justin's turn. We got purchase of a new street vacuum sweeper.
Thank you, Mayor. My memo can be seen on page 152 and 153 of the packet. The following sheet, 154, is electronic version of the bids that were open for this purchase, and following that up to 181 is the submittal of the lowest bid. So right now, our current street sweeper was purchased back in 2006. It's taken its toll. We use it about 500 hours every year. It serves an important function. I mean, it serves aesthetically, makes our city look good, it keeps a lot of dirt, garbage, plastics, oil from getting out into the wetlands, into the rivers, the lakes. So we use it quite a bit. We also use it to help pick up leaves in the fall and in the spring. So it gets used quite a bit. And over the last, you can see I have on there from 2009, the maintenance that we've stuck into this piece of machinery, the last five, six years has really escalated. So it's time to move on. So we had this in our budget for 2020, to purchase a brand-new sweeper. Of course, our old sweeper would be put on surplus for auction. So advertised for bids, we received three bids, all red, on December 30th. Those bids are listed in the memo, and then also on the bid tab following the memo. EnviroTech Equipment was the lowest bid of $273,310. We budgeted $300,000, so we're well under budget for this piece of machinery, and we really liked it. We, as in Jake Waller, Roger Hanson, myself, all demoed these vehicles. They came and visited, we visited them, checked them all out, made sure they were going to work for us, and the Johnston certainly did. So that's my recommendation, is to looking for approval for this purchase of this vacuum sweeper, for the amount listed at $273,310.
Move to approve.
Motion by Chestnut, second by, I'm sorry, who was the second? Hackett, to approve the purchase of a new Johnston VT652 vacuum street sweeper for an amount not to exceed $273,310 from EnviroTech Equipment of Lanin, Wisconsin. Any discussion? Question? Go ahead, Kath.
Would you have the maker of the motion please amend it so that includes the funding is from the 2020 borrowing, because we're going to need to reimburse ourselves back? We haven't borrowed the money yet this year for this purchase.
This all comes out of the general fund, though, right?
No, this is out of the capital improvement fund budget.
Okay, okay.
I would approve making the motion with the changes.
You okay with that? Steve, you all right with that? So we're amending it to include that? So, yeah, in future, let's make sure that we know where the funding is coming from, and we put that in ours. Maybe it is in here, I don't remember seeing it or not. Justin, do we have any idea what we think we can get for our old vac?
I think we're hoping to get about $10,000, $12,000, something like that.
So we did use it pretty good, huh?
Oh, yeah. It's been used.
Sounds good.
Justin, is there any other reason than repair costs that we're replacing this? I'm gonna, at $273,000, I don't know what the annual payments are going to be on a new street sweeper, but, do you know, Kathy?
Our interest rate is probably going to be around 2%.
Okay.
The cost of the money isn't that. No, it'll be a 10-year note again.
Okay, so we're probably looking at around $30,000 a year in payments for 10 years?
Probably about that, yes.
So, the last two years, we've had $7,500 and $4,500 in repair costs. Do you anticipate anything major coming up in repair?
Well, I guess the answer to that is no, I don't anticipate anything, but you never quite know when this equipment gets this old. 2017 was a major renovation. We put a lot of money into it because so many things were going wrong.
I guess.
We wanted to replace it back then, but we didn't have the capital funds at that time in other projects. We shifted it out and decided to put a little bit more into it that year. But it could be, I mean, we could see another $17,000, $20,000 next year, it just depends. It's getting to the point where it's reached its useful life. We think it was time to move on before something really drastic happens.
Okay. I'm having, but if there's nothing wrong with it now, does it work? Does it do the job?
Yeah, it works. We maintain our vehicles and we make sure that they work. Now, is it a perfect machine? No.
Right.
It's like a, you know, it's a 15-year-old, almost 15-year-old used vehicle.
I get it.
It's got its dings and knocks and rattles, and it's not as efficient as it used to be. So I mean, the amount of oil that it burns is a little bit more. Certainly, a brand-new machine would be much more efficient, much more comfortable, where we'd be able to do more miles, more streets, more hours than we typically would with the piece of equipment that we have now.
So there is more to it than the repair costs?
Well, yes, we're absolutely looking to increase our efficiency, where we'll be able to go down the road, and instead of at 3 miles per hour, we're looking to go 6 miles per hour.
Okay.
And for a street sweeper, that's pretty good.
Well, that's another question I had. In 2006, we bought this one for $122,000, and the new one is costing $273,000, that's a 124% increase. Is this one that much better than the one we have now?
Well, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I mean, certainly, things change as we progress. It's a larger machine, so it has a bigger hopper, a bigger water tank, a bigger engine, so all those things will add up to what we see will, like I said, be more efficient, more miles in a day versus what we have now. When this hopper fills up, which the current one we have, happens every few hours, they have to stop what they're doing, go dump it, and come back. This current, or the one we're looking to purchase, we're hoping to get by with maybe two dumps versus like five to six in a day.
Have you been getting many complaints of too much stuff on the streets where you're not able to keep up?
No, no, our guys work hard. Really, the complaints, I don't know if you want to call them complaints, but the leaf pickup is always a challenge. So this machine will definitely help with the leaf pickup, hopefully, I guess, temper some of those comments that we receive during the fall. But again, this is a piece of equipment that's reached its useful life. It could be on its last string, we don't know that, and we use it quite a bit, and we just have identified this is the time to replace it and get a new one.
Is that the normal life of, say, like, a plow truck, 15 years? Okay.
Yeah. Yep. David? I have two comments. One, you said that if you sold it to resell, or a current one, you may get $10,000 or $12,000. If you have $5,000 repair and one year of bad luck, saving, you know, $5,000, or you could blow off that $12,000 in one bad repair job. Secondly, I see I have a demo mentioned here. Did, the reason you didn't, or what are your considerations with that demo number and 2020 thing? Let's leave it at that.
Yep. Well, this low bidder put in here a option for a demo version, it'd be a 2020, so a brand-new one, with, I'm trying to think, it was less than 2,000 miles in less than, I think, 30 hours, which is basically brand-new. We like that option, and we want to do that option. The reason I didn't bring it up here tonight was because I didn't want to muddy the waters, as in, did everyone get a crack at that? So I was going to look to get the award tonight, and then talk one more time with my staff, and then this vendor, to see how we can make that happen. But certainly, the savings of that from, it's almost $12,000, we were very interested in doing that, so.
Eric, go ahead.
So with this faster machine, is it a safe bet to say that you'd be cleaning each street more often than you typically would in a year?
As staff time allows, yes.
I mean, if you're going twice the speed, I would think you could do them more often. I don't know how often you do each street. I mean, is it every couple of weeks, or every, once a month?
Uh...
What's the repeat for the machine that you have now?
Roughly every street gets hit probably three times a year, is what it really works out to. The range of the hours per year have been 300 to 700, so some years, we're able to use it more, some years, we're not. Again, it depends on the work items, the weather, what's going on, that sort of thing. Certainly, we would, if we can do more, we will.
But I'm thinking, if we have a storm or something, you can rebound a lot faster, right? I mean, and if you're not dumping as often, and it's a faster machine, you should be able to clean each street more often than you have been in the past.
That's correct. That's correct.
And that's a good thing. I mean, like I said, if we have a storm, you should be able to rebound a lot quicker now.
Yes, that's the whole point, is we have an older machine that feels like it's holding us back, and we're concerned that some, that the maintenance cost is going to really balloon, and we think it's just time. This is the time to do it, where we can get a decent price for selling our old one, and we can really use this one right now.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion, and a second on the floor. Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Eric Wilson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Justin. Next up, we have Resolution 1445, and that's also you, Justin.
Yes, it is. So, page 182 and 183 and 184 of the packet is the resolution, followed by an attachment to that resolution on 185, and 186, which is a draft survey of the Habercorn site in Lakeman Field. This is the future site of our public works facility. On page 187, which is a very helpful graphic that Rhonda made up for us, shows you where there was some old platted roadways back when the subdivision, prior to it being into, well, I guess it's current use Lakeman Field and its past use Habercorn Field. These old roadways where, let me make sure I use the right wording, because there's legal wording to this, were discontinued in resolutions by the city a number of years ago. On that same map, you can see the highlight that's yellow is River Street, which for whatever reason was not discontinued at that time. So we have documents showing all these other dedicated roadways being discontinued through resolution numbers, except for this little segment. So what we want to do is clean up the site before we start our project out there, and basically eliminate Old River Street, which is referenced as an unimproved road. We're looking to do that through this resolution. Now, it is not a vacation. That's the reason why we're doing it through the resolution process, and not a vacation process, as the intent was to discontinue these roadways many number of years ago. The parcel has been owned several times, or by different parties throughout the year, or throughout the years, excuse me, and the city is now looking to make it one contiguous piece of property. The deed on the property makes no reference that it is still a roadway, or a rideaway, or has a meets and bounds description. So the legal opinion that I've received is that it is, it's just kind of a cleanup, it's an awkward thing that's on the map, but we want to make sure that we're just doing it to make sure that our official city map is free and clear, and we just have one contiguous property before we start building out their new buildings. So the wording is within the packet on the resolution, we can go through them if you'd like. Otherwise, I'm just looking to get approval to pass this resolution, which would amend the official map and take this wording off of the Habercorn Field site.
Understand? So this must have been a long time ago, obviously, because Habercorn Field has been there forever, and Lakeman Field has been there forever, too, so it must be about 100 years ago we're talking, or so.
Pretty close to that.
Yeah, so, again, I, I mean, if that's what they're, if we're getting legal advice that we should clean this up, admit, let's do it. You know, I mean, it is all our property, so I'm not sure what difference it makes, but that's not why, that's why I'm not a lawyer, because I don't always understand those things, so.
I'd move to approve Resolution 1445.
Yeah. Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Hackett, that we approve of Resolution 1445. This is to discontinue unimproved River Street on the official city map. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
It's Dimitri Martin.
Yes, aye.
Eric Wilson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you for that.
Yep.
Justin, you got one more here?
Yep.
This is the contract, amending the contract with SEH.
Yep. So once again, memo on 188 of the packet, going back, this is several months ago, we came to you, I came to you, talking about the contracts for the landscaping project on Main Street, showed you some numbers, showed you a disconnect. We made some decisions that night, and it was relayed at that time, we would have to renegotiate to complete the landscaping work. So not that we're going to completely eliminate all... So not that we're going to completely eliminate all landscaping aesthetics on Main Street, but that we would negotiate for a lower price and look to find some savings in, in the project. So that's what I have before you. The details of that is pretty much laid out in the memo, where we had RDG on contract for the landscaping. We have since moved on from them. We have a amended contract through SEH, which is the civil engineers, but they have a landscaping component. With the nature of the work that we're looking for on Main Street, we feel that they will do a better job, more cost-efficient as well. So we have this amendment in there, which is shown on page 189 through 199. What it would do would increase SEH's design fees by $42,400. What we are saving, though, from removing RDG from the project is about $104,000. So we're seeing roughly $60,000, $62,000 of savings from renegotiating this landscaping contract that we'd be looking to put back into our contingency. At the beginning of the Main Street project, when we made all these moves for these contracts, we had a contingency set aside. That's been chinked into a little bit with the, some of the additional work that is needed, such as the plat work, the temporary easements, permanent easements, that sort of thing, which has all been brought forward to you in the past, which we can go in more detail. I see some people looking a little confused on that. Beyond the, the amendment is some updated plan sheets of Main Street. Sheet 193 is, is showing that. What we've seen in our latest review is, it's been sent to the State Historical Society, and they have commented that the bumpouts are too large. They do not meet the historical feel of the district. Those things need to be, need to be altered along, and they, they noted some of the aesthetics that we were proposing at that time. So it just kind of seemed fitting that we negotiated and then got these comments from the State Historical Society at the same time, and we're able to kind of bring forward what we should be doing. Those plan sheets show you a shaded area. That's where the black, the bumpouts were looking to be. Shrinking those up, well, you can see where those lines are now. And that goes all the way down to sheet 195, which is down by Granite Street on the Danes Home. Following that, we have some existing pictures of Main Street, which would then is preceded by renderings of that same area. So 196 shows Main Street at Fulton, 197 shows proposed future Fulton. So you can get a look at, all right, so we have to adjust our landscaping contract. We're still looking at this right here on this picture. Still looking at doing the decorative lighting, some decorative concrete. The bumpouts are still there. They have to be there through the exceptions to standards from the DOT. It's part of that whole process, and to create a pedestrian-friendly area. Session Street rendering's on there as well. So that's just in there to give you an idea of what we're looking to do now here in the future with the landscaping. So it's not that it's been completely wiped out, just altered and adjusted. So getting back to the memo and the amendment at hand. So what I'm looking for tonight is a approval for this amendment to SEH, who's our civil engineer, to give them an additional $42,400 to complete the landscaping and bar in mind that we're saving just over $100,000 by renegotiating away from the previous landscapers. Or, excuse me, saving about $62,000, sorry.
Okay, any questions?
Are these bumpouts, as we see pictured, the smaller version or the original?
Yep. What you're seeing is the, the smaller version. They've had to be shrunk down, shrunk in. The previous version had basically two 12-foot lanes as you drove down the center of Main Street. Now, with the comments we received in the adjustments we've made, you're looking at those two-foot lanes, but then, or 12-foot lanes, excuse me, were additional two feet on either side. So they widened out, so it would make it a lot more comfortable driving through. Pedestrian crossing should be about the same. Sort of walk, like right now, you walk out and you're standing about a bumper width now. In the future, you'll still be able to stand and have a much better vision before crossing.
I think that's good. I don't want another library tight situation.
On this Session Street one, it looks like there's a lot of flowers and things planted. Is that something that the city's going to be maintaining or?
Yep. So it's within the right of way. That, technically, that is our maintenance responsibilities. We have, we still have to work through some things. You know, there's plant, there's proposed planters. Now, in the past, the city has asked the adjacent business owners to help take care of those. Sometimes that's worked, sometimes that hasn't. So we have to iron out those details here in the next year before we move forward with this and finalize this as the plan. But they're showing, yeah, certainly some plantings there. Supposed to be meant to kind of soften things up, give it a better feel, and then also help a little bit with the stormwater.
Justin.
Go ahead.
Are you, are you, did you say that the width of both lanes is going to be increasing to 12, 14? Is that what you said?
Yes, the width of the travel lane should be 14 feet to the bottom of the curb.
So with less construction on each side, is that affect, is that where we're realizing savings? Or is that, I mean, because if, previously, we're, we're talking about four, four feet of less concrete and ever going into.
A little bit, yeah, because the bumpouts have been reduced. There's a lot more aesthetic treatments behind those bumpouts. So the cost of a gray sidewalk is anywhere from $5 to $7 a square foot. You start doing these aesthetic treatments, like these brick pavers or stamped-colored concrete, something like that, you can easily see that number double or triple. So I, I think these pavers out here were like 16 to 18 bucks a square foot, something like that. So by shrinking those, we're reducing that, those aesthetic items. And those are the items that the DOT would prefer not to participate in. So they want to do standard roadway items. They would pay for gray concrete. They're not going to pay for the coloring or the stamping of that. So certainly, that's where a lot of the savings are being seen with just the reduction of, of those types of things. Yeah, you're spot on.
So the, so it's just the, the width of, between the bumpouts that is being reduced, is being increased, not the overall width of. I'm not understanding.
That's, yeah, just, that's correct. So the driving lanes.
Talking about is just the bumpout areas.
Just the bumpouts, yeah.
But, I mean, I mean, that's the discussion tonight, but we have also narrowed other areas, too, if that's, and that's what he's asking about, too, I think, beyond the bumpout area.
We have, we're shrinking the bumpouts and making the drive lanes a little wider.
Okay.
A little more comfortable to drive through, yes.
So what are we, what is our cost? What is, what are we saving in cost by reduce, by increasing those travel lanes and decreasing the amount of total construction of the sidewalks?
Um, I don't have an exact number for you.
Is that part of?
It would, I would need to sit down and put pen to paper and kind of hash out some numbers to give you an idea.
So what I'm getting at is, is that, would that reduction, is that something that you can put back? I mean, is that going back into the project or is it going back into the contingency? Or do we have to renegotiate contracts to do that?
Are you talking construction cost or design cost?
Well, construction cost, I guess.
Okay. Well, we have a, we have a budget for the construction. The last time we talked about this, we were a little over, and that was kind of the reason of scaling back. So what this new amended contract is, is to shoot for staying underneath that budgeted number. So what, I, I don't have the numbers in my head exactly in, but what we're trying to do is come up with that $60,000 of savings of the design, bring the project construction-wise back in, you know, into the black, and, and just go from there.
I understand.
A question.
Sure, go ahead.
Are we going to be on the hook with RDG for breach of contract or anything like that?
I don't think so. We've, we had some conversations. We had some legal advice that we should be okay moving forward without them.
Yeah, I would just add to that a little bit. Yeah, we've had multiple legal conversations with legal counsel. And as long as we don't perform work that is original to RDG's design work, we should be fine. Which we, we will be very careful not to do.
Yep. Well, it, it goes to note that basically, the Historical Society is telling us to change everything that previously was recommended. So there's pretty much no way we can do even what we wanted to do in the past. So we, we have to make these changes now in order to bring the budget, or to bring the project back into budget, so.
Well, and, and to be perfectly honest, before the State Historical Society even made these requirements or recommendations to us, we know that there's been some staffing changes. And so from a city staff and the mayor's office standpoint, we've been looking at making some changes before they even made that recommendation. So it, it's interesting that, that some of these things that we thought were excessive were being told were excessive, and, and so we're, we're just fixing that. And, and I think we need to look at, too, that we're just talking about the design costs. We're also going to save money because we're not going to be doing those projects. But whatever projects that are being done, they're going to be done under one contract. So we'll save some money in the future on that, too. So it's, it's not just this $61,000. We'll save quite a bit more in other areas, too, as we work our way down there. And I don't think we're, we're, as far as I know, we're not finished with above-ground concepts.
No.
We're still working on that.
No, we're still working on that. I think, going back to Dimitri's comment, that those are some of the things we need to finalize here. And I should mention, next Monday, here, meeting room A and B across the hall, we're having a public meeting. Our third most likely final public meeting for the Main Street project, starting at 5 o'clock.
Yeah, at least final one where the public input will drive some decisions. We'll have more informational meetings in the future, but yes.
And this will give the public the opportunity to see the changes that have been made since the last time they've seen it, too.
Yep.
Okay. I, I don't think we have a motion yet, do we? Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion to amend SEH's contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Hagan, that we amend SEH's contract to an additional $42,400 for the Main Street project. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county.
Me again.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mary. Page 202 is the start of the memorandum of understanding. Now, this is going to be between City of Opaque and Opaque County as it is for its new highway facility, south part of town on County A. Now, this goes back close to a year ago where they started, started their design, started their project. Their building is about the middle of the lot there, and what they did not want to do was extend utilities all the way to the south border of the property. Now, past that is township. We have no development, and they thought it was kind of a waste of money. We reviewed it and concurred a little bit. The sewer is impossible to go to the south as a gravity line. So we extended the, the utilities as about as far as we could to the south as possible. Now, why this is relevant is because with development within the city, it's within our development ordinance, our zoning code, that we want fully-developed lots. So the utility should go the entire length of a property or adjacent to a property. Now, this property, this Pecq County Highway Department, does not have that. The utility stops short roughly 300, 400 feet from that southern border. Now, what this memorandum of understanding does for us and for them is that in the future, if there is development around them and a line is required to go to the south, they would then foot the bill for that extension, that improvement. At this time, we're not requiring that. The memorandum spells that out. We're, it's okay for them to stop short, which does not match our code. But however, we're, we're doing, the, we feel like we're doing the right thing by having this agreement where if there is expansion needed, they would help pay for that, what they would normally have paid for. But right now, it would just be kind of a, a waste. So looking for this approval, which would then be put on record and probably used in the future at some point. Whenever development starts, spurs again out in that area.
Good. So pretty clear that we didn't want to put any extra burden on the county at the time when, when we don't see any expansion at this time out there. I mean, they agreed to this a long time ago. We're just putting it in writing now, is what you're saying.
That's correct. It's, it's been something that should have been brought forward a little sooner than this, but just picking it up now.
Good. Any questions?
So they basically have a private well right now and a private sewage treatment system?
No, no. They're on public water and sewer. We had to extend both lines down because this section of, this portion of land was annexed into the city. We extended water and sewer. They don't, they don't need it to go all the way to the south. We don't need it to go all the way to the south property line. It would be impossible to even bring the sewer that far to the south because of topography of the land. So what we came up with is an agreement of, okay, you just take it as far as you need. In the future, if, if we need it to go further for other development, they need to pay for that section on their land. It's, it's something like 300 feet, so.
Yeah, and if you've been out on that property, it does dip quite a bit there.
Yep.
So we would need to put in a lift station anyways to, to service the sewage part of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that the council enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Opaque and the Opaque County for water line and sewer service lines. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Next up, we have, and this was on the request of Alderperson Steve Hackett, or at least he's the one that brought it up. This was discussion consideration, including mayor Alderperson's pay increases with city employee tying it to the city employees' annual cost of living pay increases. And so Aaron and I have had some discussion on this, and he did some research on this, so I'll let him take over.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. So Alderman Hackett brought up, obviously, you know, when you go 10, 15, 20 years, and that's very possible and, and happens in a lot of, in some communities where council members and mayors don't get raises. Talked about, you know, people being interested in being on council, and we want people to, to want to serve, right? And I think it was a good thing for Alderman Hackett to bring up. So we did a little research. We went on the Wisconsin County City and County Management Association website. They've got some forums where we can shoot questions out and get responses from other communities. So some, some responses were, and how, how exactly does your community handle this type of thing? We did receive with, responses from Oshkosh, Swamaco, Middleton, Eagle River, Hartford, Washburn, Marshfield. uh, Marshfield. And then also I sent a separate email out to our county partners or, um, colleagues, uh, Clintonville, New London and Wayuga. Um, and I can tell you that almost everyone does it, um, in a similar fashion to the way we do it now. Uh, Marshfield did do it, uh, and he actually gave me a call, the city administrator from Marshfield. They did, did do it the way it was suggested. Um, and I don't know if it was exactly suggested that way, but they tied it to non-representative, um, pay increases, uh, for city employees. And they actually had it in place for a year at Marshfield. And then they talked with, something came up to their, uh, city attorney. They looked into it a little further. They worked with the League of Municipalities, found out there was no case studies, but they had determined with those two entities that it was probably not a legal way of doing things. Um, so he wanted to, to give us a heads up on, let's be careful, maybe don't go down that road. Um, there, I thought there was some good suggestions. Uh, some communities pass a resolution that asks staff to bring it forward every year as a part of the budget, um, process and at least bring up the topic. That doesn't mean that everyone gets pay raises every year. It doesn't mean that it's suggested every year, but at least it's a talking point. And then it's coming forward from a staff member, most likely the city administrator. Um, and, and then it can take kinda that dynamic of, of trying to bring up your own pay raises, um, which is a, kind of an awkward one or can be, right? When it doesn't happen for fifteen years, I think it's absolutely justified. But, um, a resolution such as that could avoid that. So, so tho- those are the things I kinda learned. Um, I thought that was a pretty good idea. Um, a resolution structured in, in that type of a manner. Um, and it's certainly something I'd be willing to bring forward as an item to talk about each year.
Good. So any other comments on that? You like that idea? I mean, it's, for the longest period of time that I remember us bringing it up during the budget every year anyways, but now we're actually making it formal, that it would be in a resolution form that you would discuss it, it, in the future. So that makes sense to you. So I don't think there's any action that needs to be done tonight, but, uh, I think, uh, that, that answers any questions that we might have on that.
Thanks, Erin.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. We got some license reports. Uh, license report number fourteen seventy-nine, uh, which is the, just the renewal of the city's taxi cabs license. So, um-
Move to approve, license report number fourteen seventy-nine.
Sorry about that. It's actually R and R's vehicles, not the city's. But, yeah. Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number fourteen seventy-nine. Any discussion?
Are, are these vehicles inspected by anybody? Because when you look at this, and these are two thousand and two, and you're going, hmm, who wants to get a cab ride for that? But are they in real good shape?
That's a, that's a good question. I, I don't have an answer for that right now. Kathy, do you have any idea?
We only look at our vehicles. We don't inspect, um, the, uh, R and R, the private ones. But they do have to provide us with a certificate of insurance.
How often is that, that they have to provide it? Just once a year?
Yes.
It's a yearly, yes.
It's a yearly and then we know that that's in place for that year?
Okay. Any other questions? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, uh, these are fourteen eighty, our taxi cab drivers, uh-
For R and R.
For R and R also. Um, so these would be their renewals for the R and R drivers. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, uh, license report fourteen eighty.
I have a question.
We have a motion by Olson.
I'm sorry.
Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number fourteen eighty. Discussion? Lori, go ahead.
Are these, um, drivers, are we doing checks on them to make sure that they're insurable drivers and?
We're doing background checks.
Backgrounds?
Okay, good. Thank you.
And that's the same as what we do for our taxi cab drivers.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Uh, next up is fourteen eighty-one. Uh, this is, these are operators license, um, bartender's license, and, uh, we would just be looking for a motion to approve these.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Fair, that we approve license report number fourteen eighty-one, pending, uh, background checks and payments of any fines owed to the city. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Abstain.
Uh, okay. We got eight ayes, one absent, one abstained. Motion carries. License report number fourteen eighty-two. Uh, we have, uh, dance hall license for the Ramada Inn. Uh, we have, uh, the agent is Debbie Underberg. Uh, we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve, license report number fourteen eighty-two. Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report fourteen eighty-two. Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, why do we even have to, uh, approve a dance hall license in the first place? Is there some sort of a state statute that requires this? It feels like I've seen out a Footloose.
I don't know that there's a state statute. I couldn't tell you, but we've-
I mean, could we look at maybe just not requiring a dance license? It, it's two thousand twenty.
I think we, I think we could look into that.
Kathy, go ahead. You got your hand up there.
I believe the reason why is it, it's, uh, it, it's not really like a dance hall. It, it's a pu- like a public gathering type of, um, place. So you would want it licensed because you may not wanna cabray to operate in that area. Um, you have a little bit more control over, uh, what type of entertainment is in that building. That's the type of statute it is.
Yeah, but, I mean, like, in this instance, we're not being told what sort of entertainment they're having. We're not even making those evaluations. We don't have that information.
Dimitri, can you use your mic, please?
Yeah, yeah. I was just saying, I mean, in this instance, this is a perfect example. We're not being told what kind of entertainment they're having, who the band is or what sort of event it is. We're, we're being asked to vote.
It's a year-long, it's a year-long license. So it's for any entertainment they wanna bring in.
This is where, this is where I think what, what we should do here. We do have a motion and a second on the floor for this. Uh, Dimitri, let us do some research and we'll bring it, we'll put it on the agenda for next month, next, uh, meeting, which is January-
February. No, January twenty-first.
January twenty-first. And we'll bring it back and we'll try to figure out why we do it. I thought it was just so you could charge them more money, but I didn't say that, did I? But, uh, but let's find out. Did, yeah. Cause I don't think we're gonna be able to answer that tonight, to tell you the truth. So, okay. Uh, any other questions? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Uh, the next one is fourteen eighty-three. Obviously, you see my name in there, but, uh, we're looking to change the, uh, agent, uh, for, uh, the, the Pecq Pub. So we'd need a motion to approve that. Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number fourteen eighty-three.
Does it make a difference that we don't know where this license is going, really? In other words, you're giving it up?
No, I'm not giving anything up.
Mm-mm. It's just some change.
It's just moving from my brother who passed away to me. Yeah. That's all it's doing. Yeah.
I, I just wanted to know. I just, when I read it, I felt, why?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That's all that's happening here. Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. Uh, nothing under issues or projects, uh, communications, recommendations of the mayor. Uh, we did, they did remind you of the meeting next, uh, Monday, did you say again? I forgot.
Monday, yep.
Okay. Next Monday, and that's over in Library A and B. We did have a, a meeting last night on comprehensive planning. Uh, Lori and Mary and Dimitri and myself were all there. Uh, I thought it went well, to tell you the truth. And I, I don't know, Erin, if you wanna make any-
I agree. Uh, uh, how many people do you think were there? I think, I didn't look at the list, probably thirty to forty, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Um, and for those of you who kinda wanna follow the process, uh, Josh Werner, uh, did put up a, kind of a, a big button on the main webpage today. And we will keep you updated with future meetings and results from past meetings. So.
Yep. All right. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting? Motion by Paul Hagan to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Keeland. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at seven oh two PM. Drive safe. Have a good night. Go pack.